Okay, we are calling to order the Board of Commissioners meeting at ten twenty-two and we will start with public comment. Is there any public comment for items not appearing on our agenda? We are seeing and hearing none. We will accept public comment as each item is under consideration. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting that we held on April twenty-second?
Motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, we have proclamation twelve. We typically do proclamations on Tuesdays. But since we're really jam-packed with proclamations coming into the next few weeks. And the week prior, we're going to be doing this on a Thursday. And this is to proclaim the first week of May, the second through the eighth. As National Tourism and Travel Week here in Center County. And want to double check, we may have somebody from the Happy Valley Adventure, Happy Valley Adventure Bureau on the call with us today. But not sure if they were able to make it or not. Okay, not a worry, but this is essentially highlighting the effects that pandemic has had on the tourism industry here in Center County. And talks about how as we come out of the pandemic this year. We are well positioned and excited to bring people back to the county when it is safe in the coming weeks and months ahead. And for football, everything concerts, everything we have here, outdoor concerts, everything we have fun here. So just putting this in front of the board for us to consider approving. There's no other comments, then we would look for a motion to approve the proclamation.
Motion to approve proclamation twelve of twenty twenty-one. Reclaiming May second through eight as National Tourism and Travel Week.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Okay. All right, we have COVID nineteen planning and response section for our agenda and we are beginning with our CHIRP program. And Mark, are we gonna hear from you on this, Margaret? Or are we?
Sure, I could, I can handle if you'd like me to.
Okay.
So wanted to let everyone know that the checks for the first sixty-seven recipients of the CHIRP program were mailed yesterday. We did receive quite a number of applications during the second CHIRP round to the point where we did run out of money. There was one county that just barely ran out of money in the first round. There were two counties that ran out of money in the second round and Center County ran out quite quickly. So we will end up awarding to the exact penny all of the amount of the CHIRP grant minus the administrative fees for C D cog. There are going to be, I think seventeen companies who will be receiving a second round CHIRP funds. There were, I think roughly another twenty or so companies that unfortunately applied after we ran out of money. And I think seventeen of those twenty would have theoretically qualified. So on Tuesday's meeting, we will announce the names and amounts for the CHIRP grant recipients. But at this point, C D cog is dotting some i's, crossing some t's. And we'll be emailing the companies that received a grant on Monday. Any, any questions on the program?
No, I don't think we have it. I think we're all excited to make sure the money's getting out there and, you know, glad that we had a second round to help some more businesses out.
Sounds good, see, let's just make sure to have that agenda item on Tuesday for the announcement of the awardees for the second round of the CHIRP grants. And unfortunately, I don't necessarily think there's any press here today. But the, under the American Rescue Plan, the new restaurant revitalization fund, the rules came out earlier this week. And restaurants and similar businesses, food trucks, caterers. Breweries, wineries, distilleries, cideries. In their case, they need to have at least thirty-three percent of their sales in twenty nineteen be to the general public. Are eligible for millions of dollars of grants. Just the problem is. The Small Business Administration is quite sure they will run out of money and run out of money quickly. So restaurants can register tomorrow and on Monday at one minute afternoon. They can begin uploading their applications. The Small Business Administration suggests that. Businesses that could receive the grant should please try to upload on, on Monday afternoon. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We will then go into our COVID nineteen vaccine guidance or guidelines discussion at this point.
Thanks very much. I'll just say that we've spent a lot of time talking about vaccine guidelines and what might be in the best interest. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristen. H R is running point on this and will be. Putting out educational materials and other items. We'll turn it over to Kristen.
Morning, everyone. Thank you. Like Margaret said, we've put a lot of time into this COVID vaccine guidelines. We are not requiring employees to get a vaccine, but we are strongly encouraging everyone to do so. In doing so, we are providing time for employees to go get the vaccine. And if some people do have side effects in those first twenty-four, forty-eight hours, we will cover that time as well. We are looking to collect vaccination data if employee, that employees send that to Human Resources. So that we can use that data to make decisions about reopening our buildings to the public, returning staff to the offices. So we, the policy basically covers those things that we would really like employees to get a vaccine. That it does protect our employees and the citizens and then it'll allow us to get the, the buildings open sooner, but we are not requiring employees to do so. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the policy.
This is Steve. I guess my only concern is the collecting of, of the data. I frankly think that that's an intrusion. It's no different than if I got a flu shot or anything else. I think that's, that's data. Although you might find it useful, I find it intrusive. And for that reason, I can't support this. I, I do support everybody getting a shot, but I do not support the, the collection of, of the data for people who have gotten vaccinated.
I'll just let you know, Steve, with any data that we collect, it'll be kept in Human Resources only in the employee's medical file, which is a. Private personnel file that cannot be viewed by others, kept separate from their, you know, like payroll data, you know, performance evals. It's kept in a totally separate file. I will provide just statistical data based only on the number of vaccines that we're aware of in the buildings, not by department, not by. Name, we won't be sharing that information. It would, we'll be keeping that confidential. And that's why we're asking that if anyone shares that data to send it only to Human Resources, not to their department head, not to their supervisor, it should become directly to Human Resources. For us to log it and keep it in their files. Just to let you know.
So Commissioner Hirscham, just to put this out there, so the way that we would have to. So if they, if somebody asks off time to get a shot. And then they also, if they have side effects, really the only way that we can document that would be if they would share their vaccine card. Am I correct on that, Kristen?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, we, we don't, you know, we want to encourage people to get a vaccine by giving time off for getting the shot or side effects that might happen. Shortly after getting the shot in the next day or two. So I don't know how else we could document it without, without, you know, asking for their vaccine card. And then by doing that, we would then have that data in the H R office. That's sort of my thinking on it. Yeah. Sorry, Steve, it looks like it sounds like you cut off there. Sorry.
No, I don't have it. I appreciate your point. I, I just, I just find it troubling, so I can't support it. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, and just, and this, this is good to have a conversation now. In terms of when we, what, what kind of metrics and the data would you be looking at to reopen the building? Because for me, it's going to be helpful to see how many, you know, if our employees are getting vaccinated and they are sending that, that, you know, the, the card to H R. Or a copy of it, however it may be, that will be able to let us know, well, how, okay, we're, we're seeing that these, you know, this amount of employees getting the shot. That would help us reopen the building. Other than that, I don't know, I don't know. Or, you know, industry, how else would we be able to figure out when to reopen our buildings?
I'll make it quite simple for you. Anybody in, in this country, for that matter, that wants to be vaccinated, has the opportunity, ample opportunity to do that. And those that choose not to, then, then so be it. That being said, I feel by the first of June, if you had the opportunity and didn't take the opportunity to be vaccinated, that's on you, not me. And we need to open up and get back to normal. There's not much else we can do. There's no, no metric that, that, that will be a hundred percent accurate or a hundred percent. Telling about what the spread or non-spread of, of this disease may be. However, those that, that wish to protect themselves have that opportunity. So that's my metric. I, I, you know, we were told. Many, many, many times that when the vaccine came out, then that was going to be the game changer to get things back to normal. While the vaccine's been out for a while, everybody has a chance to get it statewide. We're at about fifty percent. There probably, I don't know what the percentage of people who just will refuse. But I, I can't control what other people do. I can only control what I think they're able to do. And if they choose to or not to be vaccinated, that's on them, not me. So, hey, if you're vaccinated and you feel comfortable, that's, that's good. If you're, if you're not vaccinated and you feel comfortable. At some point, we gotta get back to normal. I mean, we just can't live under a rock for, for a long period of time here. So I, I'm ready to go back to beginning of June when everybody's had a chance to be vaccinated, whether they have or have not been.
Steve, another circumstance is going to be as we open up more and more, our, our staff will be interacting with the public. I know of a number of friends of mine who, through no fault of their own, ended up being exposed to someone with COVID. I believe our policy at this point is that if we have employees who are knowingly exposed to COVID, they have to quarantine for two weeks. If the H R department has record that people have received their vaccine and the schedule so that we know roughly when they'll be at full immunity. Maybe we don't have to send an entire department or half of a department home for two weeks. Again, these are going to be medical records. The H R department will be the only department to have them. And the information we'll be receiving from H R will be very, very broad. Basically, just this many employee, county employees have been vaccinated.
I read you loud and clear. I just hope you can appreciate where I'm coming from.
Well, absolutely, Steve. I, I do appreciate it because I do, I, you, I think you've always been very cognizant and respectful when we've had discussions about data and. Personal information to raise legitimate questions about how we use it and how we collect it. And I've, I've always appreciated that. So I, I think this is a good discussion. I think from where I'm hearing Mark's coming from, and I think myself as well, is from a business operation standpoint. If we're, and again, we're, we're not saying employees, you must send us your vaccination card, where you must get vaccine. What we're saying is if you get vaccine, if you get the vaccination, please send us your card. We're just asking you to. If they don't, if they want to get vaccinated and not send us our card, that's fine. But what will happen is if we. And I appreciate you're saying, let's, you know, getting things back to normal, but we do know that COVID is going to stay around in some way, shape or form. And if we know, to go to Mark's point, if we know in office, so. When, when, when we do contact tracing, if, if there's been an exposure to an employee. We can now, if we know individuals have been vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine, which is great for business operations. But we needed to document that in some way. And so this would allow us just to, you know, because we're going to still call through an office and say, you know, you were exposed to somebody who had COVID nineteen. And if they're able to demonstrate that they were vaccinated or they have a religious exemption or a medical exemption, we can go a different way. And so, but if, if, and again, if you're, if you're. Not comfortable with it, totally understand, we, we can go forward as we see, as we have it right now. But are you, but just to be clear, are you comfortable still with us offering time? Off or giving time for employees to get the shot and for side effects? Is that something you're comfortable with?
I think that should be covered under our standard healthcare and leave policy. I, that, that's, I mean, that. I think that's part of, part of being a responsible adult is taking, taking the responsibility for the actions that you, you too involved in. If you, if you, hey, if I go get a flu shot and I have, and I have contraindications for it, I'm going to, I'm going to take the day off. So I don't know, I, to me, it's, it's not that big of a deal. I mean, either way. We have, we provide a pretty liberal sick leave policy, and if you're sick, then so be it.
Okay, that's, all right. Well, I, I, I appreciate those, the, the viewpoint of that. Okay? Any other discussions on the vaccine policy? It looks like Commissioner Higgins has jumped off the meeting here. Not sure if he's. Looks like his laptop is restarting. May have to wait till he comes back in here. So let's give him a minute before he does, or before we move forward with this. And we do have a retirement board at eleven, so we will end this in the next fifteen minutes, just to let everybody know.
Can you still hear me, Judge Sinclair?
I can, Judge. Hi, hello.
All right, I just want to, can you repeat real quick until Commissioner Higgins got that Small Business Association application? That, that's where it's at?
Yes, Judge, it is through this, the Small Business. Association Administration, S B A, and it's, it's called the Restaurant Revitalization Fund. So it's R R F, but the Restaurant Revitalization Fund. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty, it's a very, 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 very robust program, but you can find out more on, on their website. But if you Google S B A Restaurant Revitalization, it'll pop up there.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. We may, so let's see if we can have Commissioner Higgins call in potentially. There we go. There we go. Hi, Mark. Sorry to hear about that. Are you back?
Yeah, I'm, I'm back. Sorry. I have no control over it. It just restarts itself and obviously the reboot process takes several minutes. Sorry.
No, no worries. We were just concluding the discussion. Sounds like. We will take them or we'll look, and again, this policy, we are looking to adopt it today, correct, Margaret? Or, or guidance?
Yes, yes, we are because we are getting many questions from employees about. So the, the interesting converse of this is employees are asking if they could share their cards. They want to share their cards. So we need to be able to say to them, if you want to share, you only share with H R. It goes into your medical file. We don't want department heads or anyone else collecting this data at all. So I think it does need to be addressed as soon as we can.
Okay, and we're going to be calling it vaccine guidelines, or what is the, what is the title we're looking at here?
Calling it vaccine guidelines.
Okay. Would there be a motion to, and we can have this further discussion on the other end, but would, at least, would there be a motion to approve the, the vaccine guidelines? For Center County Government?
Motion to approve the COVID nineteen vaccine guidelines for Center County Government.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this?
None for me.
Okay, and then I should have asked this before, apologies, but Kristen, we're also looking at doing an education campaign just to, again, highlight some of the.
Yes, we.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you highlight some of the. You know, benefits for getting a vaccine.
Right, we're, we're hoping to do an educational campaign starting next week, coming from Human Resources about vaccines. On the different types of vaccines where people can go to get them. We're looking to possibly do a Q and A in case people have questions with some, with a professional, medical professional. So those are all things that I am looking into starting on Monday. I'm going to get sent some stuff from the C D C. I've gotten some items prepared yesterday when I was sick.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, any final discussion, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is carried two to one, and we will send it out to employees. Okay. Personnel items, we'll move into these. We have one for C Y S. Let, let me look at these here. Yeah, we, we might just look at doing all of them, I think. I don't, I don't know if there's anything, any new ones we have to break out, but we do need to. I know that we, we had some, we, do we need to add anything? We need to add something for the, the. Agenda here, I believe, correct? For the Finance Director, is that right?
You'll need to use the wording that was on Salary Board.
Okay, and that'll take, that'll be in place of item D?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so let's do that first. Is there a motion to amend item D to reflect what was on the Salary Board meeting for financial, the financial management position?
Motion to amend item D. Based on the information from the Salary Board meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, would there be a motion to approve items A through E, personnel items?
Motion to approve items A through E for personnel items, including the changes to item D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. For our judicial personnel items, we want to note that President Judge West has approved the personal requisition for full-time office supervisor two in Judge Jordan's office. She, the President Judge has also approved the personal requisition for full-time Majesty of Justice Court Secretary in Judge Jordan's office as well. For the Sheriff's Office, we have a personal requisition for a part-time security officer. In our non-personnel items, we have an item here for, we have two items, but the first one is for a letter of engagement. We'll turn this over to Margaret.
Requesting approval this morning for a letter of engagement with Babs Calland to jointly represent Center County. And the county's identified with respect to litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. Titled Urkel A Morocco versus Kathy Bookbar and docketed as a civil action two one dash zero one two six. The hourly representation depends on the attorney assigned. But they hourly rates would be either two thirty-five, two forty, or three oh five, based on which legal counsel has participated in the representation. This is a one-shot deal until this is resolved.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. And this is just so everybody's aware, this is related to the twenty twenty election. So we are still seeing litigation due to this and it's. Just to let folks know what this is about. So would there be a motion to approve the letter of engagement?
Motion to approve the letter of engagement with Babs Calland, Clements, and Zomner.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Just a question. So this is outside the scope of Betsy's general. Role as solicitor for Center County Government?
The payment for her time is outside of the retainer that we pay for the county solicitor. She is working with others in her firm on this representation, along with other counties, as we've done on a couple of the other election-related cases.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and then our next item here would be for authorization to re-enroll with the electrical cooperative or procurement. That we've been a part of for the last several years. And we will turn this over to Margaret, or how would you like to handle it, Margaret?
John is the lead on this, so I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, thank you, Commissioners. I'll be brief. For the past three years, the majority of the county's electric accounts have been enrolled. In a consortium through the Penn State Facilities Energy Institute, which secured CoStar's pricing for our electric needs. That is less than the price to compare with our provider of last resort, which is West Penn. The current enrollment period ends at the end of the calendar year and the Energy Institute is preparing to issue an R F Q on May seventeenth to secure. CoStar's pricing for a new term from interested energy producers. The Energy Institute has reached out to all consortium members, asking if you wish to participate. In the next R F Q, and if so, do we have any additional counts or changes that we need to include as they finalize the R F Q? The county has identified several accounts that could be added to our current enrollment list, which would take us to nearly forty accounts in total. One caveat to this is the timing related to the county's potential participation in the Center Region Solar Power Purchase Group. They are aiming to award a contract by October eleventh to an energy consultant to study the group's project. Which will include defining a project timeline, identifying a site location, and to potentially build a new solar farm. So there are a lot of unknowns relative to that project where they're at. So this is, a lot of big decisions need to be made. Going back to our current energy contract, we have until May seventh to either opt in or out or opt out of the next R F Q process with the Energy Institute. Given that and given the unknowns with the other possibility for the county. Staff is recommending that the Commissioners defer this decision until a B O C meeting on Thursday, May sixth, so that we have more time to gather some information.
That sounds like a good, a good strategy, John. Let's get, let's take that full time until Friday the seventh. So I think, I think that sounds good. Any other thoughts on this?
Sounds fine. So we're not actually going to take action on this today, then?
I would suggest the motion to defer until May sixth.
Does that sound good to everybody? We'll look for a motion to table this for one week.
All right, motion to table.
Okay, all right, let's.
All right, motion to table the re-enrollment of Center County's electric accounts until our next Thursday meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, our item, next item is going to be with Natalie Corman. We'll turn it over to her for a discussion about this. Hi, Natalie.
Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the M H I D office, I have before you a grant renewal today with our Office of Mental Health Substance Abuse. This is for us to continue in the first episode psychosis program. As you know, we applied for this last summer and were awarded a grant. And while we thought we were, I thought we were just rolling into the grant next fiscal year, we actually need to apply for it, which is why it's on your today for same-day approval. But what this program is, is an opportunity for a team of providers, Oasis, Ascend Clear, Peer Star, and our own Blended Case Management. To work with individuals ages fourteen to thirty who have their first episode with hallucinations, delusions, whatever symptoms that, that come about through psychosis. This is a team approach. Uh, this is a team approach, uh, that is evidence-based and supported across our Commonwealth. And for us to be able to get a grant allows us to serve individuals who may or may not have the insurance to do it. And it also allows us to build for time that the team meets, to work with the individual, encourage them, encouragement with family, whatever it takes, the funding that we're asking for, the hundred eighty thousand dollars, kinda encompasses all the supports, uh, that we have found that the people, uh, that enter into the program can use. Uh, we just officially opened the program in January. Um, and we so far have received five referrals and three individuals have been accepted into the program. So we're optimistic that, you know, uh, we can support it moving into the next fiscal year. Uh, I'm with the hundred eighty thousand dollars, we could support up to twenty, uh, participants in the program. Um, so I am looking for approval today. Uh, we can then electronically submit it to the state, um, with the application and budget that's required for this.
Great, thank you, Natalie. Any questions on this?
Oh, sounds great.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, great. We look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the submission of the grant renewal application to OMSOAS.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to approve. Any final discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion, oh, go ahead. Did you just something, Mark? Sorry. Okay, there must have been a cross talk, sorry. Okay, all right, motion is carried. Uh, we will, uh, see if we have any other items, uh, including discussion items for today, or are we all set? Anything that, anything else anybody would like to add? Okay, hearing none, is there an executive session we need to report?
The Commissioners met an executive session on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, from one oh eight to one thirty-seven P M to discuss personnel-related issues.
Okay, thank you, Margaret, and we have no press with us today, so we have no questions, uh, opportunities there. Uh, we look for a motion to adjourn at, uh, ten fifty-four.
Motion to adjourn at ten fifty-four.
Second.
All in favor of adjarring, do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you all. Have a great day.